We ready?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order. That was a lot of fun. I may do that again. Thanks for being here or tuning in tonight. This is a city council meeting. The mayor, Mayor Padilla, is out this evening. He is a bit under the weather, so we wish him our best. We also have a couple of councilpersons. Councilwoman Hofer and Valdivia Akala are both out, I believe. Also wish them the best, speedy recovery if they're under the weather. At this time, I would like to recognize Councilman Emerson for our invocation. Please stand if you are able.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Please bow with me. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together tonight, Father, and discuss the matters of the city. And, Father, I just ask that you grant us wisdom as we discuss these matters tonight, Father. I also just pray that you're with the mayor and the councilwomen who are under the weather. Father, I just pray that you be with them to comfort them and heal them quick. Father, we thank you most for your son, Jesus, and in his name we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please take the roll.
All right, we have Mayor Padilla, Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala, Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer. We have seven present.
Thank you. Next order of business is proclamations, and I do have a proclamation for Constitution Week, and I would like to ask Gayla Hoyt and anybody else that's with her to come up to the front, if you would, and we will read the proclamation. Sorry, it's not the mayor tonight, but I'm taller than he is. So this is a proclamation by the mayor. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration that will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing each year of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America designating the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. In the City of Topeka, we urge all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities, which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, Mayor Padilla has affixed his official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this 19th day of September, 2023. And I will give you the proclamation and invite you to say a couple of words or any of the other folks.
Thank you. On behalf of Topeka Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, we're very proud of the fact that one of our missions is education. Constitution Week is a big thing for the whole nation, all of the Daughters of American Revolution across the states and overseas. So we thank you very much for this proclamation. I have with me tonight my Vice Regent, Tanya Flores, my Assistant Treasurer, Danielle Demont, my Treasurer, Cindy Demont, and my Flag Person, Lisa Satterway.
Clerk will read.
A is an advisory council reappointment of Kim Dietrich to the City of Topeka, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Advisory Council, for a term ending September 30, 2025. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of William Nager to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30, 2026.
All right, we've heard the appointments. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move, my Councilman Emerson, second, my Councilwoman Hiller. Clerk will take the roll, please.
Councilmembers Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hiller.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
We have six yes, motion carries, with one abstention.
All right, I know William Nager is not here. Do we have Kim Dietrich, by any chance? Do not see her out there. We certainly, even though they're not in attendance, we would like to convey our appreciation for their willingness to serve on these esteemed councils. All right, Item 4 is Presentations.
So Mayor and governing body, I'd like to respectfully withdraw the Topeka Fire Department presentation. We're simply not ready. We need to come back at a later date, and there will be no update on the Topeka Rescue Mission, the other update, because Ms. Broyles cannot make it to the meeting tonight. She had a last-minute issue come up.
All right, appreciate that. Would you like to just give a presentation of some sort?
No.
No? Okay.
Question, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just clarification, is the plan to reschedule that presentation?
Yes, it will come back to you in October.
Okay, thank you.
Assume you're speaking of the fire presentation or the TRM?
Sorry, I'm talking about the rescue mission presentation.
Oh, the rescue? Well, it will come back to you also. I will get ahold of the band, and we'll get both of those scheduled.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to Item 5, Consent Agenda. Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Hannah Nager, granting First Congressional Church an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. B is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad, removing certain real property from the Dynamic Core Redevelopment District. C is approval of a professional services contract, exceeding $50,000 between the city and Lanham Legal, P L L C, to provide legal services to transact for transactions related to the development of Hotel Topeka. D are minutes of the regular meeting of September 12, 2023, and there's a list of cereal malt beverage applications in front of you, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, you've heard the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Nager, second by Councilman Cale. Clerk will take the roll, please.
Councilmembers Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
And Emerson.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
Very good, thank you. Move on to Item 6, Action Item 6A. The clerk will read.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad, imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas, to pay the cost for utility services where such payments to the city have not been made due to neglect, failure, or refusal to pay.
Thank you. I draw your attention to a handout that's in your packet related to this item and recognize the city manager.
Mayor and governing body, this is just what the city clerk said. This is something you do every year, and it's just about the only way we can collect unpaid utility bills to the city. And Nicole, anything you'd like to add?
Only if you have questions.
I believe the updated ordinance that's in front of you has some strikeouts that indicate folks that have paid since this was originally put on the agenda, and then there is a grace period of a few more days or something before this actually goes into effect. Is that correct?
Sure, I can take that. Yes, what you have today is reflective of what we've received up until noon today. We will continue to take payments till noon on September 29th before we send that over to the county to be assessed.
Very good. Anything else? Any questions from the body? If not, would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilwoman Nager. Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmembers Nager.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And Cale.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
All right, 6B, the clerk will read.
B is an ordinance concerning the 2023 Standard Traffic Ordinance, STO, and local amendments amending Topeka Municipal Code Sections 1015, 010, and 020.
All right, city manager? Or city attorney?
I just assumed the city attorney.
This was originally on discussion last week. This is updating our standard traffic ordinances to match current state law. It's published every year by the leak, and I'm happy to stand for any questions. We went over all changes as part of the discussion last week.
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Hiller?
Move to approve.
A motion by Councilwoman Hiller, a second by Councilman Cale. Clerk will take the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
And Nager.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
All right, moving on, Item 6B, the clerk will read.
C is an ordinance concerning the adoption of the 30th, 39th edition of the Uniform Public Offense Code, 2023 UPOC, and local amendments amending Topeka Municipal Code Section 905080.
And once again, the city attorney.
Again, this was discussed last week as a discussion. This updates our annual Uniform Public Offense Code to match changes to state law. We went over all changes last week, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I think we had some questions last week. Any more today from the body? Seeing none?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Nager, second by Councilman Emerson. The clerk will take the roll.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
All right, moving right along to Item 6D. Clerk will read.
D is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad, in accordance with the Section 1860-010 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a conditional use permit on a 29.4-acre parcel located south of Southeast 38th Street and west of Southeast Adams Street and along the north side of Kansas Turnpike on properties owned R1 Single Family Dwelling District to allow for a religious assembly use with an accessory cemetery not meeting the requirement in the zoning code that access to a religious assembly use be on or within 300 feet of a major traffic thoroughfare.
City manager.
Mayor and governing body, this is a rather unique request. It's about approval seeking a conditional use on a cemetery that would not normally be in a normally zoned district for that, and Dan Warner will lead you through that discussion.
Thank you, city manager. Deputy Mayor, governing body, this request by St. Peters and Paul, as explained, is a conditional use permit. The project includes a new church and an accessory cemetery, and the property is about 29 acres. The CUP is required in this instance because the church is getting access from a local street. We have requirements in our zoning code that religious assembly has to either be on or within 300 feet of a major thoroughfare. I will point out, however, that churches are typically, they are permitted in R1. The real issue here is the traffic, is the access. We wouldn't be doing this if they could gain access from Southeast Adams, for instance. A traffic study was completed by the applicant, and it concluded that the adjacent streets have sufficient capacity to accommodate the traffic generated by the proposed religious use. A couple of things with regards to the site plan. The church is proposed to be set back at least 200 feet from the closest single-family residence and also 250 feet from the closest residential lot. So this is a little bit of a unique situation where they've got plenty of land to work with here and are able to set that church and that cemetery back. We had a NIM meeting, a Neighborhood Information Meeting, on this project. It was well-attended. Some issues that were brought up include crime, traffic, and those sorts of things. Planning Commission considered the CUP at their August meeting and approved it 7 to 0. With that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Public comment was allowed at the Planning Commission meeting. There is no public comment, nor is there anyone signed up for it. Any questions from the body? Oh, she is really small on there. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Hey, Dan, I'm looking at the map. I thought we were, there was a groundbreaking for some new duplexes there.
Councilwoman Ortiz, that is for a project that is north of this property, closer to what would be southwest 37th Streets.
37th and Colfax, in essence.
Right, 37th and Colfax. Not this property.
Not this property?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Okay, before we vote, since this is a zoning issue, I'm required to read the paragraph for ex parte communication and then ask if anyone has engaged in such. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. Is there any ex parte communication that anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Councilman Cale moves to approve. Is there a second? Councilwoman Nager. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
And Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
Very good. We are moving, at the speed of sound at least, to Item 6E. Clerk will read.
He is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Sections 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code on property located at 3601 Southwest 33rd Street rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District Alda PUD Plan Unit Development District with R1 uses in sports and recreation instruction.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and governing body, this is a request to rezone from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to a PUD district that allows R1 uses in sports and recreation instruction, and hence, that is why this is a Topeka Prim Sports LLC has made this application. And Mr. Warner will throw a map up there, it's already up there, and walk us through it.
Thank you, city manager. Deputy Mayor, governing body, so the rezoning is to allow the conversion of this church to a gymnasium for cheer classes. As mentioned already, the zoning retains the single-family uses for the property but adds sports and recreation instruction use. And then there's conditions in the staff report that relate to hours of operation, indoor activity, et cetera. The key thing to note here about the rezoning is this is just a single use basically being added to the existing basket of rights for the property. Even though this is going to be a gymnasium for cheer classes, it can't turn into a gymnasium for everybody else to come use, you know, like a regular gym in town. So it's really very specific to the proposed use. Ample parking exists on the site. They've got 84 parking stalls. The building's been vacant for a year, and the proposed use of the building will provide a means for ongoing maintenance. The Neighborhood Information Meeting was well-attended, and I think some of the concerns were raised had to do with probably parking, or what the, actually, I think most of the concerns were what the PUD really meant, and I think as we explained that, it really helped everybody. So the Planning Commission considered the CUP at the August meeting and voted approval 7 to 0. 7 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Are there any questions from the body? Again, no public comment. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Warner, on the slide here, it says Fellowship Bible Church LLC. Can you tell me how they're involved?
So they're the current owner of the property, so Topeka Prime Sports, well, actually, let me back up. Mark Bernide, who's in the audience, he's buying that building from Topeka Bible Church, but they both had to apply since that transaction hasn't been fully realized yet, so they are still one of the owners of the property.
I guess a question, just a clarification. Is it Topeka Bible Church or Fellowship Bible? And here's the reason it matters to me. I'm a member, and I therefore need to abstain if it's Fellowship Bible Church.
It's Fellowship.
Okay, well, I'll be abstaining. I have no issue with this thing, and I bet I'll be abstaining on this. So I hope no one else doesn't vote or votes.
Can I make one? It's Fellowship Highcrest Church, so.
Yeah, we worked over to help planning that, so I don't know if that helps me.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions? Councilman Cale?
Yes.
Is it going to move to approve? Let me read it, yeah, and then we'll take that. So once again, I'll read this exciting paragraph. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against a matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in the light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. Record includes the planning commission minutes, staff report and its attachments, public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. Is there any ex parte communication? Seeing none, we'll accept the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
And a motion from Councilman Cale, second from Councilwoman Ortiz. Clerk will read.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, sorry, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yes, I have been in discussions with Fellowship Highcrest for probably over a year regarding this, and I can fairly make a sound decision.
Okay.
I also would like to say, I think it's kind of neat how some of these churches are coming up empty, and we're not just leaving them empty, but we're finding ways to keep them going within the community. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And would you like to offer a second, Councilwoman?
Thank you, yes.
All right, very good. Keeps everything in order. Clerk will read.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Abstain.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
And, all right, so we have six yes, motion carries.
Close. All right, and our last action item is Item 6F. Clerk will read.
F is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad relating to the vacation of a 20-foot-wide public alley extending east-west and located between properties lying at 410 Southwest 6th Avenue and 423 Southwest Harrison Street in the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
All right, city manager?
Mayor and governing body, this was deferred from last week's agenda, and we're requesting that you defer it to October 17th, 2023 meeting. There are still discussions about what this easement or what this vacation will look like. I had a discussion with one of the planning people today, and I assume that Mr. Warner will also fill you in on some other pertinent facts.
That's correct. We continue to work through the issues related to satisfying Mr. Sherwood's request to not have an easement as part of that vacation. All I can say is we're working through it, contacting the various, you know, utilities that have an interest there and see if we can work something out.
All right, I guess I'd ask first if there's any questions. If not, a motion to defer to October 17th would be in order.
Motion to defer.
Councilwoman Hiller, or a second?
Okay.
Councilwoman Ortiz, the clerk will take the roll, please.
Councilmembers Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
We have seven yes, motion carries.
All right, we have made it through the action items. We will now have public comment. I have four people signed up. We will take them in the order that they signed up. Again, you have four minutes to speak. You'll have a green light when the time starts, you'll get a yellow light with one minute left, and a red light when your four minutes is up. And I would ask Sarah Coats to come to the podium.
Hi, thank you. Did you pass it up? Thank you. Hello, I'm Sarah Coats. I am a licensed master of social work and licensed master of addiction counseling at PARZ. I provide the evaluation services for children that are referred often through the schools. We work with every school in Shawnee County. This has been an established program for about 20 years, where there's an incident, whether the child self-reports, they're caught with a substance or test positive, that they're referred to us for a full evaluation, and then we follow through with any treatment recommendations, mental health referrals, any appropriate community resources. We provide this at no cost to any child referred from any school, and if the child is referred through community corrections, mental health, it's a $25 charge. We really pride ourselves in eliminating as many barriers as possible. Last Monday, we received an email with a subject line that it was time to vote discussing our special alcohol and drug funds that pay for our program. The line was "Time to Vote," and in the body it had the instructions and the timeline, said it was sent per supervisor. This email was sent to about 25 people, had the deadline for voting. The attached document had the scores for every applicant and agency that applied for the SAD funds, and so we get this, and we see that the proposed recommendation is about an 80% cut from our funding. We immediately contest this, immediately respond, because a reasonable person would conclude that voting was live and active based on that information. For multiple days, we tried to get ahold of city staff with no return phone calls, no return emails, and we continued to reach out. We asked for feedback, we asked for information, and then several more days, we were provided feedback. And the feedback that we received from the committee was just not factual. It's just not.
It's just not accurate. It was very upsetting to read it. I know my executive director already has four pages of notes. In one of it, they said that they were not clear if we met our outcomes. So last year, for 2022, it was proposed that we would provide services to 75 adolescents and 75 parents. So if you come and see us, then you're not just getting your evaluation, you're going to get education on alcohol and drugs, community resources, parent rules, all of those things. We saw 98 kids and 103 parents, so we far exceeded. I will make it quicker. So when they said they weren't clear, that was actually stated four times in our application, also during our presentation with the committee, while they had every opportunity to ask any question or if anything was unclear. And that's one of the discrepancies and unconventional practices. Another applicant received the RFP bid prior to it being released, then turned it in incomplete at deadline and was given additional time, yet that was not reflected on the scoring sheet that got sent out to everyone. So very briefly, this program, it can't be cut. That's the one thing they got right in the committee. It is vital. I ask that you think about that before voting on any special funds. Thank you.
Yep.
And City Manager's not here. I don't believe we have a vote coming up anytime soon. We'll move to the next person that signed up, Ken Otten. Ken?
Hi. I assume every one of you got my emails. I've been talking to you basically since the first of March. I basically got no feedback, and like I said in my last email, I was just here to ask if you guys had any questions about what's going on with me, because I am totally out of resources and out of options.
Sir, this is public comment. We don't interact in this part of the meeting.
That wasn't, then, someone should, then, every one of you got an email, and someone should have told me that, then.
Sir, you have four minutes to tell us whatever you want to tell us, and.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Cheryl Richardson. Cheryl? All right. Corey Chandler.
Good evening, and thank you for having me once again. And thank you for last week, by the way, the homeless law that you guys passed. There's a lot of us that really appreciate it. But I have a question. So I was just at another meeting where I was told that my taxes are going up, everybody's taxes are going up, to pay for a non-existent airport, that the only ones that get to use it is CEOs of every large company out here, anybody who's got deep pockets that own a plane. Right now, if everybody paid $20 or $25 through the city of 150,000, that's $3,750,000 that's going over to our airport here in Topeka, and yet our taxes are going to go up on that. Is there any way to take that back and put it towards the homeless fund? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, that is all the folks that signed up. Item eight is announcement. City Clerk?
There is no meeting next week.
That's a great announcement. City Manager.
I do, Mayor and governing body, I have announcements that'll last 105 minutes. Not really. Trying to win a dollar. The announcement I have is there will be a reverse vendor fair on Thursday, October 12, at 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the historical great Overland Station. This will give vendors a chance to meet with different government agencies to promote their products or services and register to get notified of bid opportunities, and that's it.
Fantastic. Thank you, City Manager. We'll move to. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor, one more.
Okay, that's it, one more.
So over the past couple of days, a number of people in this room did another phase of the homeless strategies meetings with Brianna Silvan. I sat in on a couple of days, I was there about 15, 20 minutes both days. I watched both groups work. It looked to me like it was being, that there were good conversations going on, and it looked like there were good strategies coming out of this, which you will hear about later. That's all going to be put together. I think Brianna is putting that all into what she sees as groups of the main discussions and go from there about having people move on to the next phase and becoming part of that. But I just wanted you to know that that project did get underway, and, for example, our city attorney was there both days, and like I say, I was in there a couple of times during the day, and it looked like there were good, healthy discussions going on.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council announcements. We're going to start with Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I won't be long. I just wanted to remind everyone that October is my favorite, favorite, favorite month. And if you've been on the council long enough, you'll know why. I'll see you guys in my favorite month in October.
All right, Councilman Emerson.
Deputy Mayor, as much as I'd love to keep us all here till 10, nothing tonight.
You are a great American. Councilman Cale?
Just remind everyone to get out, support your local schools and their events they're having going on. You know, share ideas, what's going on in Topeka, look what's going on in Topeka. And then also, you know, it's getting that time where elections are about to happen here in about five, six weeks. Make sure you're educating yourself on the candidates, get to know the candidates, contact them if you have questions, because we have, I think, four seats up here and whatever else going on throughout the election cycle. So make sure you're getting informed and get out to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. September is Suicide Awareness Month. If you or somebody you know is struggling with thoughts of suicide, know that you are wanted, know that you are needed, and know that you can call 988 or get resources at There are different ways to go ahead and get in touch with these licensed professionals on the other side of the line. You can do video calls, there are ways to go ahead and get connected. If you are deaf or hard of hearing, you can text, but 988 if you are having any issues with suicide. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just two quick things. The first is, I will address, and I have a question for City Manager, Ms. Coats' concern in the PARs issue. I know that, I don't know if we all got an email or not from members of the board, I know that I did, I'm sure others did. I know that Councilmember Hiller and I had a conversation and sent some questions to staff, as probably others may have. We did get a follow-up on that. I guess good news, bad news was, bad news was, there seemed to be a glitch in the system itself. Good news is, we seem to be on top of it, so I did appreciate that update. My two questions, which don't need answered tonight, would be, one, can you just keep us updated on that process of, we're walking through it? And then, two, could you send us, as all this stuff runs together, where we are in that process of when we make those approvals on those funds? And if we're talking about 25 funding at this point, or 24 funding, because there seems to be a little confusion there, which obviously makes a big difference to a lot of folks. So those clarifications would be helpful in that process. The second thing is, everybody has until 5:00 p.m. on September 29 to tell Evergy if they are not too happy with their proposed rate increases. The city manager put together a letter that he is sending on behalf of the city to the Kansas Corporation Commission expressing our city's concerns with their proposed rate increase. The KCC staff has come out, and in their analysis said Evergy probably doesn't need this increase at this time. In general, and I said this a few months ago, and I will make it public, I will be submitting a letter as Citizen Duncan, Councilmember Duncan also, and I encourage everyone else to do so. I think for me, the biggest frustration in their rate increase proposal isn't just that it's a rate increase, it's that if you live in the Kansas City area, it's basically $3, and if you live anywhere outside, they want an average of $12 to $13 a month. It costs the same amount of money to build the line in Topeka as it does in Kansas City, so I don't know why, and that, so part of my concern isn't just the increase overall, but certainly asking the KCC to analyze a justification for such a substantial difference in that rate increase from different parts of the state. So you can go to kcc.kas.gov, just, you know, search for Kansas Corporation Commission, the link is right there, and you can submit your comments and concerns about that rate increases, I will be doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Couple things. One, thank you, City Manager, for working on the Evergy letter. If it's already gone, or when it goes, if you could let us all see a copy, I have had a constituent in particular that wanted to keep up with that, and I will share it. I have had some questions, and thank you for the brief report about how the homeless initiative has gotten started. I don't know about my colleagues, but I've had some calls from people who wanted to know if there was going to be an opportunity for them to give input, like a public input session, or if yes or no, because I wasn't sure if there was someone to whom, I encouraged some of them to put their ideas in writing, and said I would find out where they could submit them, so that at least people had a chance to have some input. So I had an idea, but I thought I should just check, and I want everybody to know that we'll find out, and there'll be a way for people to send in something. Third, I have is that the 18th Annual Aaron Douglas Art Fair is Saturday, the 30th of September, something I was involved with since it very much started. Lots all cleared now that the construction's over on 12th Street, so it is a wonderful annual fair. It's a free fair, it's from 10 to 5, and is on Saturday, the 30th, particularly for diverse and emerging artists, and has generated some tremendous artists that are now very active in this community. And last, we, I think everybody on the council got an invitation today from the county, that the county's planning commission is doing a survey on what people think about wind and solar farms in this county, and the survey is out as of today. It's not due back until the 20th of October, so there's plenty of time for people to grab it and submit, or to share it if they choose to. That's a new topic for us since years ago now, when this commission, or this council, approved a windmill on the Hope Academy grounds, and so I didn't even know they were taking it on, and I think it'll be interesting, because their questions have to do with the entire county, including the city, as I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Makes me wonder what kind of tractor you use on a solar farm, but I'll save that for later, I guess.
Just charge it up, you know.
I have no comments, other than to wish the mayor a speedy recovery, and if there is no further business appearing before the governing body, this meeting is adjourned.